I'd like for everyone to either silence or turn off their electronic devices, please. Chief, will you lead us into the pledge of allegiance?
I put like you. United States of America, the true republic of this stands, one nation, united by God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public safety committee is down in the courtroom. I think we have a roll call.
Mr. Revere?
Here.
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 Before we get started, I'd like to ask the members of the public safety committee if we could amend the agenda to add, I guess it would be Agenda Item 4A to the introduction of two respective police officers. We need a roll call.
We need a roll call and we need unanimous consent to amend the agenda.
Mr. Revere?
Yes.
Mr. Rason?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, item number four, the police department report, Chief.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Mayor Lee and the Public Safety Committee, in order to keep both yourself and the City Council aware of the activities of the Port Allen Police Department, I offer this account for the month of March 2021. Incidents responded to 213 calls, alarm home businesses 33, disturbance is 21, custody matter four, theft six, suspicious activity seven, damage to property four, remaining after being forbidden five, Port Allen Fire Department medical 10, inflammation 10, domestic three. Incidents by location, northeast of Court Street in LA 153, northwest of Court Street in LA 154, southeast of Court Street in LA 143, southwest of Court Street in LA 147, and south via 1014. Total suspects arrested was 12, traffic crashes 34, traffic tickets 68.
Any questions, Chief? Chief, if you would stay there, okay, item number four A, this would be introduction of two respective police officers, Chief.
Mayor Lee and the council, I would like to present my selections for hire. I would like to hire back former officer Bobby Hopson at the rank of Sergeant 114A. He has over 15 years of total experience, including rank of Corporal, Assistant Chief, and City Marshal. He brings back an abundance of knowledge back to the department and we look forward to hiring him back. My second selection, I would like to hire Kenneth Parker at the rank of Officer at 112A. He would be coming to us from West Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office, where he served as a jailer for approximately 10 months. He also brings three years of road experience from EBR SO, where he was a patrol deputy. These two would bring positive outlooks, necessary knowledge to the department, and would help us on our path to prosper. Thank you.
What's the first officer name?
Bobby.
Let me think, you resigned from the city of Port Allen?
When did you resign?
November 1st, 2020.
November 1st, 2020.
So, when you resigned, you used a good problem and then solved from the reason that you resigned?
Yes.
Do you have any type of internal affairs records for Mr. Hopson?
Not that I know of. I would have to look into that. I don't have any knowledge of it offhand. I would have to look into that for you.
And other gentleman, is his name Kenneth?
Kenneth Parker. You from Baton Rouge, huh?
If you would, they'd each.
Oh, come on, come on, come on.
Step up, introduce himself.
I'm sorry.
Bobby Hopson, I'm 47 years old. Currently, at the moment, live in Evangelion Parish, but I have me a place to move to out on Court Street. So, I'll be just right outside the city limits, but I'll be right here on the edge of town. So, I'll be fairly close.
I think they're remembering you, buddy. I'm just looking at you, can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they recognize your face when I was on the phone.
Yes, ma'am.
Working and stuff.
When you left, you was a sergeant?
I was a Corporal. Yes, ma'am, shift supervisor.
I remember you.
Took a report for you.
Yeah, very well.
Yep.
And you want to come back to the Port Allen Police Department?
Yes, ma'am.
You enjoy just staying in the Port Allen city?
Yes, other than, I mean, didn't want to get into it, but there was reasons why I left, but the problem's been solved.
I see you back in six months when you resigned because you have issues.
No. No.
As far as, how do you feel about the community outside of the actual department?
Oh, I have no problems. I liked it here. I like Port Allen.
It's safe, bro.
Yes, very safe. I tell people all the time, major difference from this side of the water than the other side.
How you think the community responded to you?
I think it was like it should have been. I mean, you have your people that just don't like to be policed, but as far as that, I mean, didn't have any problems. I mean, you're going to get complaints if you're doing your job, you know, but none of them were sustained and there wasn't very many of them that I knew of. If I got very many, I never was told about it.
How y'all doing? I'm Deputy Kenneth Parker. I am currently working with West Baton Rouge Sheriff's Office. Like the chief said, I worked three years in EBR on the streets. I live in Port South of Louisiana. I don't know if y'all familiar with that. You're familiar, a lot of fishing. But I am currently on my house. I worked under the chief for some time in West Baton Rouge. And with leadership and positive vibe always, every time around him, I seen he had an opening after the, I applied and still blessed to be going through the hiring process. And this is where I'm at today.
Well, I just have one thing to say, and I'm not just judging you, but.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, every time we see these little officers not coming out of the town, they come and bully our people, trying to make a name for them, but we don't want that. We want you to come out and be funny to the community, you know, get your name on by being a good officer and not an officer that always harasses people because you trying to make a name for yourself for this little town. We want you to come and if you love to do good police work, come here and do your job, treat the citizen right. I know all of you, I can be good citizen, but you have to know that you are a good officer.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't want you to come here and bully all the people around trying to make a name for themselves.
Yes, ma'am.
What state?
I'm a people person, so I'm good with people.
But we just want you to be funny to all people. We don't want you to come here saying, I'm a cop, I'm from here.
Yeah, that's no problem.
That doesn't mean anything. You have rules and laws that you're right.
Yes, ma'am.
Treat your kind and come. Like I said, they're not going to treat you good, but you have to be that bigger person and treat them good, let them know that you are that good officer, no matter what.
I'll put taken seriously correctly. Thank y'all.
You say you're in the jail or you working in the?
Yeah, I'm working in the jail right now. Thank y'all.
Make this an agenda item next week. Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all.
Agenda item number five, discuss status of property located at 734 Avenue G.
Council members, as you recall, we've previously had some enforcement actions on the property. Some substantial work has been done on the property. I've had some informal conversations with some of you, but at this point, you know, we're just looking for some guidance on the council on whether, you know, the council believes the property is now up to standard or if additional maintenance or work is needed. And Mr. Joseph has put some photos in front of you that were from March 18, 2021. But I know some of you, you know, if you're close to the area, you probably see it more frequent.
From March 18?
March 18. If we can have some updated pictures for next week's meeting. Obviously, no action tonight on it one way or the other.
That's the capex guy, he was before Monday, she was out there too, up in the yard and the front yard there, people out there talking. Looks like she was trying to make progress, but it looked like she just stayed and everything needle on one side.
Well, that's, you know, definitely progress has been made.
Right.
We're in that point where the council has to determine, you know, what is the acceptable level of progress for the city.
My mistake.
Yeah, they have made a lot of progress and, you know, if each council member could before next week, before we, you know, make any decision, if you would, just pass by there and just take a look. I mean, I passed by, it looks a lot better and it's a shame. It couldn't, it didn't take much more to look better. So, if the rest of the council would indulge me between now and next Wednesday, maybe make a pass by there and that way you can see it for yourself. Go up next week, so. It'd be good, just make this an agenda item, address it. Agenda item number six.
Talk to the caller, Mr. Thomas Form, you're welcome.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Revere?
Here.
Here.
Item number four, discuss NLC service line program.
Thank you again, council, for allowing me to come back and talk about the NLC service line program. You all should have the information there. Well, what we're looking to do is to enter into an agreement with the city of Port Allen to educate and assist your residents on their water and sewer line responsibilities. I talked about this, I'm going to say, back a little over a month ago with you guys. In regards to how our program works, what we do is partner with cities to educate those residents. We send out mailers to every single resident that you have. We do ask that the city's logo go out on that marketing material. And the reason being is so your residents are educated on those lines, so they don't just throw that mailer in the trash. They open it, they read it, they understand that they're responsibility as a homeowner and that this program is available to them if they want it. It's completely voluntary, so your residents do not have to enroll in that program if they do not want it. They can cancel it anytime, so it's nothing that's bonding them to that contract or anything like that once they enroll in the program. What we found is that most homeowners can't afford a $300 emergency expense at their home. So, with this program, they're paying $5 to $6 a month to have this program for them. The city can receive a revenue stream from it. It's a dollar, it's 50 cents per enrollment. If a resident does enroll in the water, the sewer, and the in-home plumbing, then the city will receive $1.50 each month if that resident is enrolled. The city can do whatever they want with those funds. Some use it for low-income families that are having issues that the city can help with. Some use it for fall festivals. It's totally up to the city on how you guys want to allocate those funds. But what I'm here today is just to see if that's something that the city wants to potentially enter into, but we would never mail without your approval prior to each and every mail campaign. So, we only have three mail campaigns per year. We do it in the fall, the spring, and in the winter. And we would come to the city, whoever your point of contact is, and provide the mailer to you guys and say, is this all right? You would review it and approve it. If you guys do not approve that, then we would never mail. So, if you guys said, yeah, we want. It would state that you would have that option to never mail if you guys do not like how that letter is read or anything on that.
If I understand you correct, it is no expense for the city. It's strictly voluntary for the citizen?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, it costs the city nothing, but this program is exclusively through a partnership, so we can't do it on our own. It would be a partnership with the city for your residents to receive that coverage. That's the NLC service line program, and then the leak adjustment program. I know, like I said before, you guys can't write off on the water, but you write off on the sewer line. To recapture some of that revenue stream for the city, we have that leak adjustment program. That, you do not have to enter into an agreement. It would be considered insurance. We are insuring those water and sewer line leaks for the city. That one is completely optional for your residents as well, and the city could cancel that insurance at any time, but that doesn't cost the city a penny as well. The residents would pay around $1.75 a month to have up to $500 worth of leak adjustment. If they do not want that, they don't have to have that, like I said, as well. For the leak adjustment, I think we have it right here. Yeah, go ahead.
Counsel, we received the proposal this morning.
Yeah.
In the process of reviewing those documents, the mayor and I had some questions. Considering the timeliness of the presentation, we felt it prudent to go back with Mr. Davis and go over his information before presenting it to you all, so we can present one solidified agreement that clearly indicates, you know, what we're willing to enter into. The mayor had some questions about what was presented, and we felt it necessary not to present this agreement in its current form.
Yeah, and one of the questions was, you mentioned leak adjustments, is the adjustments going to be paid by y'all?
Yes, so the adjustments are paid by us. So, how the program works is if a resident wants that coverage, right, they enroll in that, they have that. We pay the city directly. So, if a resident says, hey, I had a water service line leak, and now their water bill is $1,000, but it's typically 50, then we would come in and pay the city $950 for that leak, directly to the city. And the reason why we partner with the city on that program is because it's insurance, and if we did that directly with your residents, then we would pay them directly, and they may not come to the city and pay you guys for that water leak or that sewer bill that's higher now due to that water leak. If I'm not mistaken, I want to say it's like $1.75 for up to $500 worth of leak adjustment on the water, and then, yeah, and it's a combination rate. If you guys want to offer the water and sewer, you can choose if we just want to do water or just want to do sewer for your residents, but that's up to you all there. Does that answer your question, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had another question, reference to the 29th, I remember it's special school. We have some issues, we had to go on the roadway, which up that price to almost $6,000. Would that burden us to go through all more?
When you say on a roadway where it was up to $6,000 of a water bill, or what do you, sewer bill? To repair the sewer line. So, if you're looking at that, there's two different programs. One is a serve line leak adjustment program, and that's insurance, and that's just for the water bill, the sewer bill. And that, the council decides on if they want $500 of worth of leak adjustment, $1,000, $2,500. The other program is the NLC service line program, and that covers up to $8,500 per incident. That one, it would cost the residents around $5 or $6 a month for water, $6 or $7 a month for sewer. There was two different things that I sent you guys in that email. I'm not sure if both of them came through, but.
One was a marketing agreement.
Right, and at the end of, yes.
At the end of the marketing agreement.
It gives you, yes, it shows you that on that last page on that marketing agreement. It shows you the price, the $8,500 per incident. And that covers up to the street, as the mayor was saying, you know, if that repair is out in the street, we make sure we partner with the city, so we cover whatever your residents are responsible for. So, if they're responsible to the meter on that water, then we cover it to the meter. If they're responsible to the sewer main, then we cover to that sewer main, wherever that lays. If that's underneath the street, then we're going to pay for that, so your residents don't have to come out of pocket for the most expensive part of that repair.
So, it seems like the serve line program is more contingent upon the resident's choice, and the NLC is more how we want to engage as a municipality?
I wouldn't say that. Both of them are, if you guys want to engage in it. The NLC service line program is more if you, if you guys say, we want to provide this type of program for infrastructure needs of your residents. If you know if your residents have water line breaks, sewer line breaks, you're saying, we want that for them. The leak adjustment is more as if the city is writing off sewer bills and losing that revenue from sewer bills. If they say, hey, how about we stop losing that revenue and increasing our, you know, our utility bills for our residents and recapture that lost revenue for the city on that program. But both of them are the customer's choice. The serve line program, that program, how that works is it would be 100% participation at the beginning, but we do send out information to your residents to say, this is going to be a line item on your utility bills, and it's going to start in two months. If you do not want it, call us and we will take your name off of that. They can call us, they can, if they want to reach out to the city, we'll have one person that works directly with the city to say, hey, I have 25 people who do not want this, and we will make sure that they're not enrolled in that program once it rolls out.
So, for clarification, I believe leak adjustment results in a payment to the city to cover the water exceeding the average water.
Yes, sir.
The service line portion covers a payment on behalf of the homeowner to repair their line.
Yes, sir.
The water meter cleaned out to the city manager.
Yes, sir.
So, that was part of the reason, we didn't present the information because it wasn't clear that $500 figure is not in the document. That being said, currently, if we have a water leak. That being said, currently, if we have a water leak, we are prohibited by law from adjusting your water bill, the water usage. We can adjust the sewer portion that did not go into the sewer system for treatment, but went into the ground or into the drainage system. So on average, we typically do a three-month average of each customer's sewer usage and adjust it back to that amount upon proof that a water leak caused the problem. So that is what he's addressing in terms of this service covering that adjustment because it's lost revenue from us because we don't get the water back and we don't get the sewer charge that's associated with the water. And it does get pretty expensive. It can get pretty expensive on average. But, you know, most of the customers just can't afford to cover it based on the way it originated. So plus, they have to pay for the repairs, and they have to show proof of the repairs before they'll get the adjustment. So it's a, you know, it's a little conundrum there when you have to deal with repairing the lines, paying for the water, and the sewer usage that really wasn't treated by the sewer system. If that helps. But once we narrow down the documents and get the language correct, we'll have a more concrete proposal to present.
Thank you for that. That's exactly right. Sorry about that, but that worked. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm really interested in the residents getting this information generated out to them because over the years, I know that we've had incidents where they've had major repairs, and they haven't been able to cover them. So I think this is just a good program that they should look in, you know, entering into. And so I think it is very important that we give them the information and they have options. Without options, there's no growth. We cannot move forward.
True that, true that.
Yes, sir. I guess this just happened, that this occurred yesterday. A gentleman came in, and he's a lieutenant in a commercial suite. And during the freeze, I believe his water line was broken for, he said, one day. And it resulted in 18,600 gallons of water. His bill was $1,300. So he got the water line fixed, but we can't credit the water. We can credit the sewer. And it's a fraction of that $1,300 dollar.
And being a part of the program, you would come in and how would you resolve that?
So with our program too, I didn't go over that. You went over the freeze, which you guys typically don't get a freeze here, but I can make sure that we have thawing the frozen water lines. So if that ever happened again, if your residents are enrolled in it, we would thaw out those lines for them. And if they break because they freeze, we will repair that as well. But how we would come in and work with that? We would have repaired his water line, and we would have paid the city whatever you guys choose as the limit, that $500, $1,000 for his water bill and for his sewer bill. So he wouldn't have come out of pocket for anything on that. We would have paid that. We would have found a local plumber to make the repairs. And he would have been paying $5, $6 a month, and then $1.75, $2 a month for the leak adjustment. So he would have had no worry, and the city wouldn't have to write off that sewer bill that they write off, which was, I would say, somewhere close to $1,000 or $700, $750.
And how timely are they in getting out there to make those repairs?
So a water service line break, which would be considered, you know, an emergency, you need something done now, we try to get someone out there within four hours. Sewer line backing up into the home, which is an emergency, you know, that sewage, that's not sanitary, we try to get someone out there in four hours. If they just say, "I have a high water bill," we have someone out there in 72 hours to try to locate where that leak may be. We do have the in-home plumbing as well. So, you know, if they have a toilet that's leaking or something like that, 72 hours. But things that need to be addressed immediately, then we try to have someone out there within four hours. We only use the local area licensed plumbers to make the repairs. So we're going to find the plumbers that you guys have here to make the repairs in this area. All right. And the turnaround time to pay the city, we try to have that done within a couple of days. So that would be paid to the city for the leaks as well. All right. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you all again. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Item number five, here from City Engineer Tony Eric Cole regarding emergency repair. In connection with city waste water treatment facilities.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council and audience. I'm trying to go through this relatively quickly. One of the, if y'all recall, essentially, I guess we've been reporting on the option or the potential option of being able to go to the Gron future plant's wastewater plant. And that seems to still be open, but however, that, their actual final decision to locate there has not been determined. So we can't, at this point, obviously, put our eggs in that basket, although I just want to point out that most of these improvements, and I'll describe them how they apply, would still apply even if you did or ending up going to the plant. Right now, where the plant is, is a, you know, a major pump station. That pump station, well, there's actually two, the effluent pump station and the influent pump station. They essentially would have to remain there or you'd have to rework the whole, you know, rework your whole sewer system, which would, of course, be cost prohibitive. I toured the plant, and of course, I've been looking at the plant, and y'all's new superintendent, BJ, absolutely had to be, I felt, prepared just to keep the plant running and also things that could, we could use in the future, even if we went to the Gron facility. And this is the list, if y'all don't mind. I won't read them all. Let me just kind of, number one, the influent VFD and pump motor. Well, those pumps are controlled by VFDs, so basically, that means that that pump and that VFD, you know, don't work. And so those just need to be fixed. Because even if today, y'all had, you know, the grant from the federal government or something, we can't build another plant or even a force main in less than three years. I mean, by the time you tell me to go. So this can't last that long. Replacing the polymer system, that kind of falls a little bit in with the de-watering system, y'all. They have a, we have a belt press out there right now. It's kind of been, I guess, a problem child, a lemon, if you will. And it's also fairly complicated. There's a system out there now that a lot of the waste haulers, like, you know, BFI and them use. They basically take a big roll-off container. They put, for lack of a better term, a sock in it, and then they add polymer to the waste. And then that waste goes into, that sludge goes into that sock. The water comes on the outside of the sock. You drain it back into the plant. And that's really, it has very few moving parts, as you can imagine. And then you pay a cost per dumping. And that, the city of Plaquemine's using that in lieu of using a belt press. And, you know, they feel like as a cost and maintenance thing, it's working out for them. And obviously, the beauty of it is you're not really putting much money into the system. So if you end up not having your wastewater treatment plant there five years from now, you just tell them to come get the dumpster. So obviously, I recommend that. We all have a VFD that's burned up from lightning. That certainly needs to be replaced because obviously, that blower can't work. You have five blowers at the same size, and right now, three of them, for varying reasons, are not working. So obviously, we need to rebuild those. I'm not purporting to change those out because they're relatively new. And I also, in the case of something like that, I also feel like you should have a spare. So one, we'd create a spare. The biggest item in all these is the effluent pumps. Y'all recently had an emergency where they had to get a contractor out to basically change the guts of one of those big pumps. There's three big 10-inch pumps. And, you know, the parts and stuff like that, that's not something that you just like snap your fingers and have. They're not, they're certainly not a shelf item. They, you know, very difficult to do. And you have to have your effluent pump station because obviously, you don't want it going out in the city. You want it to go to the Mississippi River. My suggestion in this station would remain either way, whether we put our plant, you know, in east of the town or we put it at the Gron facility. So I suggest you put some money into it to fix it. Basically, replace the two older pumps, which at this point, may be 40 years old, y'all, the bodies of them. I'm not absolutely positive. It's, they're pretty old. Replace the control panel, which is quite frankly outdated and not working. And take those two pumps that we replaced and basically piece them together with a new internals, and then you'll have a spare pump sitting to the side. And that'll basically get you, should get you to, you know, whatever decision's going to be made regarding the plant and relocation. The last one is just some small improvements, like repairing the flow meter recording, adding a little ramp for screenings, just a few items like this. And if there's, I guess, one thing I would implore, I don't know if all of y'all have already gone to the wastewater treatment plant, but I would highly suggest that, you know, you get with BJ. I wouldn't just walk through it by myself because quite frankly, it's not safe from that perspective. And just kind of look at what it looks like. I've seen a lot of wastewater treatment plants in my life. A lot of them need, you know, a lot of tender loving care. Let's just say this one's in the top 10% of needing tender loving care. And, you know, I urge that y'all do at least some, if not all of these. Because you don't want to do some of this action under an emergency, like, obviously, like when you had to fix the effluent pump. Then it costs you more than, you know, more than you deserve. Other couple items, if y'all would humor me. One of the future projects we're going to have is another point repair project. You know, you kind of need to continue working on your lines in the West Side Village. Next week, your little CWF on 8th Avenue, replacing a leaky galvanized pipe is going to be bid. And so we can act on that. Of course, it'll have to be awarded the following month. And then lastly, and I apologize for this, but I wanted to make sure it got on because I didn't think it was fair. The roadway project has essentially been completed with the exception of some punch list items. And what I would ask y'all do, and I asked the contractor to do this because it kind of fell in between meetings. I asked him to only put in one pay estimate. So his pay estimate basically is the job in its entirety complete. And just to give you an example of what we would need to get approved would be the final adjustment change order, his pay app, and the certificate of substantial completion. The final adjustment change order is basically where we compare the original quantities to the old ones. And essentially, we came in $3,000. It's a decrease in the contract price of $2,868.66. So that's always good, obviously. The pay app is for $292,241.89. And that's basically, the project was completed at $307,623.04. And it was awarded at $310,491.70. So, you know, we were right on the money. And then lastly, the certificate of substantial completion is the one that, you know, basically says he's substantially complete with any, you know, punch list items. And we do have a little punch list. But that just allows him to file. We still have a year warranty. We still have, you know, his money until he provides the lien. I don't know how many of y'all have driven through that neighborhood. I've done it several times. I felt like the contractor did a really good job. Everything, you know, as usual, cleanup could always be better. He's going to do a little bit more cleanup. But I felt like the asphalt itself came out really well. If, you know, I'd encourage you to take that circle. Any questions on any of this stuff, y'all? Certainly, I can present it all at your council meeting, but I do really implore y'all to strongly consider this sewer stuff. Thank y'all.
Do you have any questions?
For real quick, none of it, not for you necessarily, Tony. Just, your budget time will be here in three months, two and a half months. And I had suggested and thought about it, maybe, you know, we get the, we started a road rehab, an annual road rehab. Maybe it's something we can do, keep in mind about finding money for a sewer rehab. You know, an annual $300,000. We're looking at 4:30 tonight with this. It's going to help us keep on top of it, as opposed to all of this falling out loud. I just think it would make sense for us to do that if we find money to do it. It's supposed to have a big volume.
Councilman, I agree. And let me just say, obviously, hopefully, within the next nine months, we're going to know which way we're going on the sewer plant. But you still have the whole collection system that essentially, you're always going to own, you always need to maintain. In, you know, the best scenario that probably y'all could afford is you basically take roughly 10% of your collection system each year. So in a 10-year cycle, you will have gone through your whole collection system. Now, whether or not $300,000 covers it, it's certainly better than nothing. You know, we haven't done any point repairs in about four years. And I can tell you, you know, y'all have a lot of clay pipe. And what it essentially means you're doing is you're treating, you know, clean water, running it through your wastewater treatment plant. Thank y'all.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on, Michelle. I do have one question. So do we need to add this on, any of this on Jennifer next week?
No, we're going to look at it and pick it up in the budget process. We wanted to give as much notice as we can to let you know that the budget will contain some items to address some of these needs.
So you're going to go through the road project?
The road project, yeah.
All right.
Are there projects like the 170? Probably something we'll consider doing?
I think, I mean, without...
Because it's in bad shape all the way down.
But I have the budget request in front of me. I believe that $300,000 figure has already been mentioned. And that was before we received this list. It was just going back and forth with BJ discussing what we needed to address right away. The effluent pump is always the number one because the way that plant works, if you can't pump the water from Mississippi, everything else is moving. So, and we did have an issue with the last rain where one of the effluent pumps went down, which left us with only one pump. And that's not sufficient. So the effluent pumps will be high up on the list of priorities. And, you know, in consultation with Mr. Eric Cole and in discussion with you all, we'll work it out and put some provisions in the budget to address the most pertinent needs.
Thank y'all. Community Development Committee, item number one, Carl Orr. Item number two, Staff Quan. Item number three, Rowcall.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Yeah.
Mr. Huber. Quan's present.
Item number four, here report on community development activities. Ms. Rosa Shipp.
Good evening, Ms. Rosa.
Good evening, committee members, council members, elected officials, and guests. Well, we had to push our little economic development projects kind of to the side this week to try to take care of some community stuff. But we're still excited about working toward fulfilling some of the empty storefronts and trying to get businesses to the city to increase the tax base. But that's the economic development piece. Community development-wise and activity-wise, we're excited about this weekend. This is the weekend that we're going to salute our state championship basketball team and also pay tribute to our powerlifting team, both from Port Allen High School. So first of all, I'd like to thank the council for providing some of the funds for it. But I also would like to just mention a lot of our donors throughout the city that really have come in with dollars as well as in-kind services. And it's just so exciting, and we still have some that continue to come in. I'd like to mention, on a level, some of our contributors, our platinum contributor, Heavenly Gates Mausoleum from Baton Rouge, owned by Hall Davis Funeral Home. Bergeron's Fine Meat, owned by Parish Councilman Craig Mooney Bergeron. The Kamogo Float Company, who gave us a super discount on our floats for our parade. Our gold sponsors, Placid Refining Company, Lucky Louis Trucks. Our silver sponsors, LA One South LLC, owned by the Phillips family, Reliant Technologies. Councilman Kerry Denstall, Kuzan Entertainment, Coca-Cola Bottlers, and Rick's West Side Crawfish. And I'm thinking we got some more that are coming in that we just don't have. But those are the ones I had on hand that I just wanted to mention at the council meeting and just tell them, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." With their in-kind donations of over $7,000, along with cash donations that total over $3,700, we're able to actually have a fine, fine event on Sunday. And we're looking forward to seeing everybody in this room here and present. And I'm sure our council members will be there. It'll be on that first float as it takes off in the parade. That takes off at 1 o'clock on Sunday. It'll start at William and Lee Park. It'll start at William and Lee Park, work its way down Louisiana Avenue to Jefferson, all the way to Court Street, back to 14th Street, ending on Eddie Payne. And then we'll go in with a small program that we make special presentations to the players and the coaches. And then we have a special treat for the players, a special dinner that Bergeron had prepared for them. And then I think our crawfish folk will have a crawfish ball after that. And there will be food for the general public. So it's exciting, we're going to try to stay COVID responsible, but we want to have a good time. And we really want to let the basketball team, as well as the powerlifting team, know how proud we are to be a part of their family and that they are members of the Port Allen family. So we're just excited, and I'd like to say a special thank you, especially to the two council women who kept me on point for the last two weeks. And Councilwoman Lacy and Councilwoman Gordon from her sick bed kept us going. So we'll see how it comes out, but I'm so excited, and I think it's going to be a great success. Along with that, we will, on next week, have a presentation of a program called Go Jobs, where the Department of Workforce Development will, can come into our parish and actually pay for training at certain jobs in our city hall, up to, I think, three jobs, am I correct, Mayor? For six months, whether we keep the people on or not, they will actually pay for these folk to be trained in certain areas that the mayor or his designate select them to be. So the young lady, Ms. Delbar, will be here on next week with your permission to make that presentation, exactly what they're going to do that does not cost the city anything, but also help us increase our workforce for that six months, whether they, we're not obligated, from my understanding, to keep them on. But we will have that help and that training if we need somebody to replace somebody. It's always something we can do. But we wanted to have her here to answer any questions that you might have on next week. I'm thinking that's kind of all I have, I'm open to any questions.
Well, first of all, I'd be remiss if I wouldn't tell you thank you for all the hard work that you have put in this, trust me. I understand that it's very hard work, so I do thank you. And I think it was very important that we got sponsors.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it make it easier for us. I know, as in relinquishing money, that seemed like always be the issue there. But I see that you do diligent work out there, I see that you give it your all, and I just want to thank you because I saw you pull it off. I actually was able to be by your side to see what you're doing, it's not easy.
We'll see what happens, and you have to be careful not to over ask because we know we got some other things coming down. That the ones that we didn't ask this time, I even went to a lot of the vendors that we did not ask because you don't want to ask for too much, a lot of them go, look, I need nothing from you this time, and this is what we going to do, just want to make you aware, but I will be back to ask you next time. So they're braced for us to come back, but it's exciting, it's exciting, especially when the council has gotten so excited about it. So I want to thank the council for getting excited about this project and coming on board, and we just look forward to Sunday. And I understand so far, we're going to have a good weather day on Sunday. The parish has been fantastic in their cooperation, so we'll be out as early as Friday, setting up, and of course, early Sunday morning to make sure everything goes off without a hitch, from the beginning to the end, and sometimes you have to tell the man, he don't have to stay there till everything is over with, but he will be there from the beginning to the end with us. And we do thank him for his presence in keeping us on task.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief. And thank the sponsors, just thank everybody for just coming together. I would have liked to see a little bit more diversity in some areas in the parade, but we're going to continue to work on that.
We're going to work on that, we're going to work.
I would love to see all our council members there. And we do for the people, we working for the people. The team, they went out and they supported us, helped the community, and that's the best that we could do, that we should do, just by looking. We need to come together.
And our parish councilmen...
We don't stay for the whole evening. We let the people know that we are here for them and we are working together.
Yeah.
So we all need to be there as councilmen.
Our parish councilmen that represent this area really have kicked in with their time, their dollars, their energies, and they've helped us. And we know, you know, everybody's kind of busy because they have full-time jobs or something to do, but we know we're in your hearts, and we really appreciate all that you're doing to try to help it work.
We're going to pull Mr. Hubble out. He's not going to be out on Sunday. I'm going to pull him.
Any other questions?
Excuse me, I have no instructions.
Not for me, I appreciate all you do.
I get out my sick bed and got well to come here, then you don't come, I'm going to get you.
And like I said, we almost, we almost was trying to do it on Saturday and come to find out Saturday is going to be a bad rain day. So we're excited about moving it to Sunday and really having a great day Sunday evening. And like I say, we're going to try to be social distance because we're not going to over-invite. And we got a long enough parade route that everybody does not have to be crowded upon each other, that they can see something exciting. And the thing is, the kids feel special. And it's just easy to explain to folk, hey, this is for the kids, and they really feel good about what we're doing. So I'm excited, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
Item number five, adjourned.
Call the personnel committee, order to establish a court for whatever roll call, please.
Mr. Hubble.
Here.
Ms. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Hubble.
Here.
Quon's present.
Item number four, discuss Mayor Lee's recommendation of Brianna Jones for the position of Assistant Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Mayor.
As you all aware, that we did approve of Assistant Chief Financial Officer position for the city of Port Allen. We conducted the interviews, and I have chosen out of the three applicants, Brianna Jones. Her family is here from Port Allen. Ms. Jones is LSU graduate in Master of Science in Analytics. She's also a Southern University College graduate, a Bachelor of Science in Finance and a minor in Accounting with a grade point average of 3.3. She's currently employed at the Office of Financial Institution, where she's the compliance examiner. She also held a job with Allen Accounting and Consulting as an accountant. And she also worked with the Department of Public Works in Baton Rouge as a business operational intern. She's a bright young lady who has a pretty good future ahead of her, and I'm pleased to have her as one of my picks for that position.
I'm sorry, you said she had a master's?
Yes.
From LSU?
Yes, a Master of Science, yes, sir.
What sign, I'm sorry, that's what I think.
Hmm?
Analytics.
Analytics, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Analytical science?
She's a candidate, says December 2021.
Sorry?
The master.
Oh, yeah, December 2021.
Okay.
Yeah, she's a candidate for it.
Yeah, she came there for.
Yep.
So currently, she works where? I heard a couple of different jobs.
She's currently working with the Office of Financial Institution as a compliance examiner.
Compliance examiner. What is the description of a compliance examiner?
Her description was she conducts field examinations of financial service providers, such as insurance companies and banks and residential mortgage lenders. She also deals with state and federal laws, policy rules, and regulations. She examines records of access assets, such as cash and accounts due to, due from institution investments and loans. And she examines records of liabilities, such as deposits, accounts, savings accounts, certificates of deposits, taxes, debts, loans, and so forth.
So with the description that this job has, in comparison to that, you feel like she was just the better fit? Based on what?
Based on what we do here for the city of Port Allen as an accountant, or as a financial person for the city of Port Allen. And if the council want, I can have her appear at the council meeting next Wednesday, if you wish. Okay. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Like that agenda next week. Item number five, adjourned.
Finance committee, call and order, establish a court, roll call.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Hubble?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Quon's present.
Item number four, here from representatives of Washington National Insurance regarding the provision of supplemental coverages.
Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Stephen Tonley, I'm from Baton Rouge, native of Baton Rouge. I represent PMA, which represents Washington National. We specialize in the providing of supplemental health and insurance, but I did want to take just a second to acknowledge Ms. Rose and everything she does. She's a tough act to follow, but I'm going to give it my best shot. Appreciate what people like you do for our community. So I've given each of y'all a brochure, I'm going to kind of hit the highlights on it. And then if y'all have any questions at all now or afterwards, the business card has my cell phone as well as the inside of the booklet, so I am readily accessible. And that's what we at Washington National, we are local agents, we are phone call away. We don't want you, your staff, or your policyholders that we have with your city, if we get it, to get on the 800 number and wait and wait. We are here local, and we will help solve any problems or anything. I met with the mayor yesterday, and I appreciate the opportunity to come speak before y'all tonight. So we're going to go through the booklet kind of quick. We have over 12,000 organizations that we service throughout the country. Here locally, we do service the town of Addis. We also service West Baton Rouge Parish Schools. We service the state of Louisiana. We're in the process of scheduling a meeting with the town of Brulee. And tomorrow, I have a meeting with the West Baton Rouge Parish Council of Aging, with Mr. Tommy. So we're looking to broaden our presence here in West Baton Rouge Parish, serve the community, serve the town of, or city of Port Allen, as well as its employees. We've been around since 1911, so we've been around over 100 years. We specialize in governmental entities, but we can also service individuals, as well as their families. And we also can service small business owners. Employee benefits, as y'all know, they're a powerful recruiting and retention tool for the employees that you have. Having to go through and replace employees that you've had for a long time, very expensive to replace them. So anything that an employer can do to improve the benefits, which employees across the country are looking for a better set of benefits, and that's where we come in. Voluntary benefits matter as well. Now, we typically would do payroll deductions, and the mayor and I talked about that yesterday. One note on if we do run the benefits through payroll, we would be able to issue or offer the city of Port Allen a guaranteed issue hospital or life insurance policy. That means no qualifying questions. If we do run it outside of the payroll system, which we certainly can do, we would do an auto draft to that particular employee's personal checking account. We can do either way, whatever accommodates the staff here, and whatever we can work out, we're flexible, either way is fine with us. But the benefit of actually running it through the payroll system is that guaranteed issue option that you would have. Obviously, your major medical covers the bulk of your medical expenses, but any major medical is going to have gaps in the coverage. You're going to have deductibles, copays, benefits that the major medical will not cover for you, and that's where we come in. We pay our benefits directly to the policyholder. So Blue Cross or Humana, or whoever your major medical, they cover, doctor, they cover the hospital. We pay our benefits directly to the policyholder. The policies are portable, that means if the employee were to quit, change jobs, or retire, these policies will follow them, same benefits, same premiums, no change in the policy. Next page, there's different policies we offer, so there's a lot of different things we can offer to y'all and your employees. We have a cancer policy that we attach ICU coverage. ICU is most expensive part of being in a hospital, of course. That ICU portion of that policy would cover you for any reason at all that you would end up in the ICU unit. It would not have to be related to cancer. We also have a heart and stroke policy that, again, also can attach with the ICU coverage. We have an accident policy. Any reason you're seeking medical attention not tied to an illness, that policy would kick in. We also have a couple of critical illness policies that would pay, they're designed to pay large lump sums to the policyholder on the initial diagnosis of something like cancer, or heart attack, or stroke. We do also have a hospital policy, which would be triggered or pays benefits in the event that you end up in the hospital. We do also have a universal life insurance, it's similar to whole life, but it offers you more flexibility, a lot of different components there that really gives the policyholder a lot of good options and a lot of good benefits on the life insurance. Now, one thing that sets us apart in the marketplace is what we call return of premiums. Washington Nationals paid out over $3 billion in premiums as a return of a premium. So the way that works for you is, if you take out a policy with us, you never get diagnosed, say, with cancer. You've had the policy for 25 years, or at age 75, you've never been diagnosed, you never file a claim, we will actually return 100% of your premiums back to you. The policy would remain in place, no change in premiums, no change in benefits. We're simply returning your money back to you. So that's a huge deal there. We actually have seen $10,000, $15,000 checks go back to policyholders for that very reason. So that kind of gives you a feel for what we do. Again, I'm here local in Baton Rouge, phone call away. We are dedicated to the personal service of the staff, to the council, as well as to the employees, and that's what we're about, coupled with that return of premium, and just really a fantastic set of benefits in these different policies. Each of these policies are independent, so you can take one or two, doesn't really matter. It just depends on what you think your situation is. We tailor these to the specific employee and write the policy, you know, write policies that is appropriate for them. So that's all. I want to have any specific questions now, or certainly feel free to call me at a later date. You've got my cell phone there on the business card, as well as on the inside of the brochure. Mayor, you have any questions? Okay, anything else that you can think of that we may have covered that I didn't throw out here tonight?
Yes, sir, you covered everything.
Very good. Again, Mayor and council, I really appreciate the opportunity to come out and represent Washington National and tell you a bit about what we can do for y'all. Look forward to hearing from you.
Would this be something that we present to the employees at some point? I mean, they were ones, it's supplemental, it's voluntary, I would think.
Right, correct.
Yeah, and he can, I think he got one more open enrollment, but he gets this tomorrow.
If y'all need me to come out tomorrow, I'm available. You want me to call you in the morning?
It's from 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow.
2:00 to 4:00, and where is it looking? Two to four and where is it located? Right here? Glad to come out tomorrow, two to four. How many employees do you particularly expect to see for that?
The majority should come tomorrow because we only had about 10 Tuesday.
Okay.
Twelve people. Some majority should be tomorrow, so.
Okay. I'll be here tomorrow, two to four then. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Item number five, here from Steve Smith of Republic Services regarding renewable city waste disposal contract.
Hi, I'm not Steve. This is Steve. This is Steve Smith. He's my municipal manager. I know most of y'all, I'm Sharon Mann. I'm the general manager for Republic Services. First, I want to thank the council and the mayor because the partnership, and I truly believe it's a partnership that we have together, especially last year was a challenging year. Not only did we see, you know, people contact, contract the COVID virus, but we also saw a lot of people have to work from home or possibly get unemployed. Well, with that came, by our surprise, a big increase in volumes of garbage because telling you, people in Baton Rouge, for sure, they stayed home and decided they were gonna clean closets and do all this kind of stuff. So and then we had hurricanes on top of that. And then we just went through an ice storm. But I want to thank y'all for really a true partnership. Our employees love working out here with y'all. You know, our contract has an extension for five years available and that's what we're here to present. We would love for you to consider that and we would love to consider the partner, to continue the partnership with the city. I know that there's a couple of council members that would like to see your bulky waste picked up and the hand pile picked up on the same day. We can absolutely do that. I know one has picked up on Wednesday and one's picked up on Saturday and I think it would be much more convenient for the residents to be able to just put it out at one time. So I have to kind of see what that looks like. I'd love to be able to tell you tonight it's gonna be Wednesday or Saturday, but we gotta do some routing and some things that we have to look at. But I think that's gonna be easy for us to do. And then, you know, if there's any questions, does anybody have any questions for us?
I got you saying the bulk be coming in once a week or minutes on a Saturday?
Right now, you're getting your out of cart picked up on a Wednesday and your bulky waste, your boom truck on a Saturday. Or it might be reversed. I think y'all made a move that. It's reversed, it's reversed. I get confused sometimes. But what we've been asked by a couple of council members is that y'all would like to see those picked up on the same day instead of having to put it out twice or leave it out at the curb for like, like if you cleaned up on a Sunday, instead of it, one thing being picked up on Wednesday and one thing being picked up on Saturday, why not just have it all picked up on one day? And that we can easily do that. I just gotta figure out from a routing perspective, whether it's gonna be on the Wednesday or the Saturday. So if it's something y'all really want us to do, that's easy for us to do.
Me being with the parents who work with Republic for a while.
Yeah.
And call.
Yep. She's semi-retired. She's still gotta be in the business, so yeah. She's still helping us, yeah.
And I know, I have seen the truck pass by, dribblings and stuff on the road and I stopped in that corner, why you didn't pick it up?
Mm-hmm.
And they said, we can relate with you right here.
Yeah.
But then once I called up office, they can't make me pick it up.
Of course.
So I don't know what was the reason why they passed it up, but they, you know, they come back in two hours later to pick it up.
Sometimes.
They have a problem.
Yeah.
Once I called you all, they pick it up, you all just sit and run back out.
Listen, I'm gonna give all of you my personal, my card. I've been with Republic Services for 34 years, born and raised in Baton Rouge. You know, I'm not going anywhere, love what I do. A lot of, sometimes not Mayor Lee, but some of the other mayors will call me the garbage lady and it's true. But I, you know, I really believe that, you know, it is about being part of the community along with assisting and taking care of our customers. The two things that we mainly focus on are safety and world-class customer service. And, you know, unless a constituent calls or y'all call, a lot of times we don't know there's an issue. So we do appreciate those calls because we want them to provide that safe environment and make sure the public's safe and also make sure that we're taking care of our customers.
Well, I sure have some things we picked up now.
Look, we have a lot to be picked up right now.
I told him about it today.
Okay, well, I'll give you my, you can, my email address is on here, my cell phone's on here. I true, and I text, Mayor Lee texts me all the time. So and listen, I'm available 24/7. I answer my phone pretty much even on Saturday nights, right, Mayor? So if there's anything I can do for y'all, please let me know. And hopefully y'all will consider the five-year extension for us. Any questions?
Well, I just want to make a comment. I mean, it's been a good relationship with Republic. And obviously, nothing's perfect.
Yeah.
When you have a storm and you have, you know, the, so when things are going smoothly, you won't hear a word, I just think you say anything. But the first time a pile of brushes left, you know, for an extra week or so, yeah, I do understand the property owners frustration with that.
Yep.
But anytime I've contacted Republic, like Charlene just said, it's taken care of. And they're human, they're gonna, they may miss the street, they may miss, so. But overall, I think the relationship has been good. That's just a comment I wanted to make.
I appreciate that. You know, during this ice storm, you know, I reached out to Mayor Lee and, you know, there, we didn't realize how bad it was until after the fact. And at the end of the day, it really, for your town, there didn't need to be an additional expense just going through the process of, you know, your emergency contractor and all that. And we just asked to make sure that everybody just kind of give us time to get through. And then it all, you know, the ice storm happens and then boom, it's Easter. So, oh, everybody always cleans up around Easter anyway. But that's the kind of relationship that we want, you know, just to be able to talk to people and everybody kind of work through it. And I appreciate that because y'all have always been very supportive of hurricanes and things like that. Anybody else? Well, thank y'all so much for allowing us to present.
He over there picking up, he would be crazy. Go ahead.
I just want to thank my council members and those who live, you know. Thank y'all for your prayers, your phone calls. My family and I, y'all was battling with COVID and me and my grandson and his grandmother, we had it at the hardest. You know, I was real down for like 30 years. We, I'm not 100% better, but I'm 99, 499. So I am really good, man. I just thank you all for y'all prayers and y'all support, the phone calls and it takes a really minute lot to.
Brad goes a long way. I'm glad we could be here to support you, give you support and love. So you can continue to be here.
Yeah, I was speaking, I was still bothering me.
All right, council, I have a few things just to keep you on notice in reference to the sewer treatment plant. CES is now cleaning the two tanks that's been inoperable for almost a year now. And hopefully, within the next week, if the weather holds up, they'll have that completed. And also, we're all aware of the parade this weekend to our high school basketball team and the powerlifting, the ladies' powerlifting team. I want each one of y'all to actually give a little recognition to the grass crew and roads and drainage crew. They did an excellent job at cleaning the sidewalks and the roadway. If you look through the city, including the roadway and LA1, they did an excellent job. And they still got a little bit to do, but those guys worked their butt off before the storm. I mean, the storm we gonna have the next day to have this event looking good for Sunday. We need to keep in our prayers, we got a couple of workers that still out with this virus, so hopefully they'll recuperate and come back. And that's basically it. Yeah, anybody got any other thing, questions about anything? All right, well, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.